All right. Good evening and welcome to the Northman City Council meeting, or September 10th, here in the council chambers at 7:01. I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting to order, and please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is signed by the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Hello and welcome, everybody. Thank you so much for being here tonight, for those of you who are here in person, and for those of you who are watching online, live or recorded at a later date, we appreciate you being here. Our first item of business would be a roll call. I'll ask our city recorder to help us with that.
Council Jones, here. Council Hamilton.
Here.
Mayor Engelke.
Here.
Council Goll.
Here.
Council Schultz.
Present.
Council Norrod. Present. Thank you.
All right. Our next item on the agenda, number three, is we have two ceremonial items tonight. Our first one is, we are very happy to say that we have a 15-year of service for Derek Wyndham, our engineering coordinator, and I believe our public works director has a few words to say. All right, come on forward.
This was a little tough, because Derek performed so many different functions for the city of North Bend. Prior to having a licensed engineer, he was the engineering coordinator, he's a licensed surveyor, so he's a city surveyor, he's our GIS coordinator, and then because he didn't have enough stuff to do when we lost our building official, he decided to get licensed in building mechanical A-level plans examiner and all those. So Derek, he's also kind of the person who knows where everything is in the office, because he has the longest tenure in the office. Probably in my staff, the most irreplaceable person there, I'm not being honest there, because he knows where everything is. We actually transferred some of the other positions, he's the longest tenure, but the building official, we lose him, we can hire a new building official, don't have an engineering technician if he leaves, we don't have a GIS coordinator if he leaves. And I am really happy to have him, and that's, I just want to congratulate him, he's lasted long, he's an excellent employee, and I really appreciate him being here.
All right. So we have, in the middle of the table, there is a certificate, and Derek, if you would honor us with some photos, we would love to have those for the archives.
Absolutely.
So why don't we have the council come on down? Maybe welcome to one of the...
Where you go, Ralph.
Two, come on.
More the barrier. All right. 15 years of service, congratulations.
Wow.
Okay. All right, in here. Oh, it was last forever.
All right, here we go. Thank you.
More than welcome to say, of course, or a funny story about Ralph, we take that too.
I just wanted to say thank you to Jan Willis and Bob Yulik for hiring me at a time when nobody was hiring Lancer Harris back in 2008, 2009. I wanted thanks to Charles O'Connor for saying something to me and helping me expand my role in the building department. Apparently, I'd like to thank David for providing people-centered, results-oriented, fun and supportive work environment. I'm truly blessed to be here, working in the city of North Bend, a community that I grew up and loved. Thank you.
Well, our next item that we have for our ceremonial is our U.S. Coast Guard 50th anniversary, and we have a proclamation, and I'm going to ask Commander John Williams to come forward.
Actually, one of the council, if you want to go ahead and join me down there as well.
All right, Commander.
Thank you so much for joining us today. Okay. All right, thank you. I have a proclamation to read from the city of North Bend. Whereas the United States Coast Guard, one of the six branches of the United States Armed Forces, has been a cornerstone of maritime safety and security since its founding in 1790, playing a crucial role in protecting our nation's interests and ensuring the safety of those at sea. And whereas the U.S. Coast Guard Air Station North Bend has, was commissioned on September 28th, 1974, co-located with the North Bend Municipal Airport, a former Navy Auxiliary Air Station situated along the scenic shores of Coos Bay. And whereas before the establishment of the air station, rescue operations on the Oregon coast required aircraft to be dispatched from Astoria, leaving a significant gap in response time for mariners in distress. And whereas over the past 50 years, the original Coast Guard group, North Bend, has grown to include an air facility in Newport, six motor light boat stations, two additional search and rescue detachments, and aides to navigation teams responsible for maintaining five lighthouses, and 181 minor aides to navigation, all dedicated to ensuring the safety and security of the southern Oregon coast. And whereas the air station, which initially housed three HH-52 helicopters, has since upgraded its fleet to five HH-65A Dolphin helicopters, reflecting the growing demands for search and rescue, law enforcement, and environmental protection missions along the 220 miles of Oregon coastline from Pacific City, Oregon, to the California border. And whereas the Coast Guard Air Station North Bend has been pivotal in saving countless lives, not only at sea, but also by assisting with inland search and rescue operations, including medical evacuations for injured loggers and other emergencies. And whereas the brave men and women of the Oregon Coast Guard Station at North Bend have shown unwavering dedication, exemplified by their heroic acts and actions, such as the January 2003 rescue of five fishermen from the crab boat Jeanette Marie, and their response to countless other emergencies over the decades. And whereas the partnership between the city of North Bend and the United States Coast Guard has been one of mutual respect and collaboration, enhancing the safety and resilience of our community and the region at large. And whereas this 50th anniversary marks a significant milestone in the history of Air Station North Bend, and offers a moment to honor the service and sacrifice of all those who have served here, past and present, and to reaffirm our commitment to supporting the Coast Guard's vital mission. Whereas I, Jessica Engelke, mayor of the city of North Bend, Oregon, do hereby proclaim September 28th, 2024, as United States Coast Guard Air Station North Bend Day. In the city of North Bend, and call upon all citizens to join in celebrating the 50th anniversary of this esteemed institution, recognizing the indispensable contributions of the United States Coast Guard to our community, our state, and our nation. In witness whereof, I have here and due set my hand and cause a seal of the city of North Bend to be fixed this 10th day of September 2024. Congratulations. Thank you. And that's a city of North Bend shirt. Yeah, thank you. Is there anything that you would like to say?
Yes, so on behalf of the men and women of the Coast Guard at Air Station North Bend, past and present, for 50 years we've been here and enjoyed the camaraderie and the partnership with the city of North Bend, and we look forward to many years to come. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
We had our city recorder record that, too, so that you can share that with the Coast Guard, and I think he's committed for one photo, and he's got one. The longer the proclamation, the more photos are taken.
That's how it works. Whereas, does he camera one? Yep, yep. He's got a little gap. Come in, Pat, a little more. All right, I'm sorry, but I gotta get you in the photo here. Thank you.
Please extend our congratulations.
Thank you, Larry.
For seeing our service, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you, Larry. Thank you. Madam Mayor, for the record, Council President Garbonin is now joining us online.
Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and note that, thank you. Okay, all right, well, that takes us to number four on the agenda, which is our consent calendar, is there a motion from the council?
Move to accept the consent calendar as written.
Heard a first from Council Jones, and a second from Councilor Hamilton, is there any discussion? All in favor of presenting, or all in favor of accepting the consent calendar as presented, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is, we have public comment. I had a slip for public comment, but has the gentleman left, are they still here? But I saw, there was one, Mr. Lush, that had signed up, I'm not seeing him here in the chambers.
I saw him leave.
And there's nobody online, right?
Correct.
Okay, if he comes back in, I'm happy to go ahead and take him, but we'll go ahead, and if there's no public comment, we'll move on to number six on the agenda, which is the award of the grant for the street paving to Johnson Rock Products, page 27 of your packet. Great discussion in the, always in the work sessions, but is there a motion from the council on this line item on this?
Move to award the grant street paving project to Johnson Rock Products for 132,290 as per bid.
Heard a first from Council Jones, and a second from Councilor Schultz, is there, is there any discussion? All right, all in favor of this, to move forward with the grant paving project to Johnson Rock Products for 132,000, 132,290 as per bid, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Number seven would be action, if any resulting from executive session, we don't have that, takes us to number eight, which is our city administrators' report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. The city administrators' report is published online, for those that would go, like to take a look at it, it's also cross-linked on our social media. It's the best-read gossip in town about how everything's going on in the city, and where your tax dollar money is being used. Couple shout-outs, want to say that the Parks Department has been awarded a CIS Risk Management Grant. This grant will be used for security cameras in our parks, and so they'll be working on that. Our library received word, and it was published today, that just nearly a $35,000 grant that came in, and it will be for the children's area, that's been published online as well. And so we are very grateful for those grant opportunities as they have come in. Also, I want to inform the council two things, one, we will be doing what's called an over-hire, and since our labor attorney asked me what an over-hire is, we have a specific number of FTE, full-time equivalency, budgeted in the budget. So for instance, I'll give you a number, if we are approved in the budget for 10, and we go over, say, by 11, and we hire someone, that's a over-hire. We have a critical staffing issue right now in the fire department, and this necessitates for public safety that we do an immediate over-hire, so I have immediately authorized the fire chief to go to the most current pool and immediately hire an additional firefighter. And so that is number one. Number two, our finance director will be in charge next week while I am taking in the raise in Mexico, and so I apologize that I won't be here for you, but you can reach out to Jeff. With that said, the rest of the good news is in the published reports. So back to you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Number nine would be our committee reports, is there anything from you? Okay, I know that we have an item under other business, I believe there's going to be a motion to sunset the special events committee, so we'll save that for that piece then. So if there's no other committee reports, then we'll go ahead and move on to council comments. So, Council Norrod, shall we start with you?
No comment.
Okay, Council Schultz?
I just wanted to say that I went to see the Little Mermaid Jr. at the theater, and so the stu-, the kids that worked there, or did the production, had five weeks, and they put together a great show, and so watching, just basically under 18-year-olds put on a whole production was really great, to see schools back in session, and so I'm busy with that.
I forgot, I forgot what I was going to say. I wanted to offer congratulations to our planner, Mr., why am I forgetting his name? Derek Payne, Derek Payne has finished his undergrad degree in architecture.
Oh, wow.
Yes, very good, and he is also studying for the big test that makes him a certified planner, so he's studying that, and he's looking to get his master's degree by correspondence from, I think it's, it's a school that's very much credited to, for master's degrees for urban planning. So this is great, he's really found his footing, and I'm really, I'm really happy for him, it's great.
All right, Council Goll.
It's a real busy time of the year for us, we've got football wide open, and I had a football game last night, and we got volleyball tonight, got to watch a few minutes of that.
It's played on Friday.
Who is?
Yeah, there's...
We got a bye.
Okay. No game this Friday.
But that's it, it's a very busy time for Northbenders.
Okay, all right, Council Hamilton?
I don't have much either, I've been busy too, other than the fact that I know it's not North Bend, but it's in, it is a North Bend, it's, the airport had a thing about the playground and the possible changes to the, to the playground up there, which was really cool to see, and see what they had to offer, and the people, what their wishes and wants were, so that was kind of neat, but that's all I really got.
Okay, Council Jones?
So we just, we live in a sea of change that only seems to be accelerating, and so when I hear employees that describe the management style as people-oriented and results-based, this is our most powerful way to head into the changes coming in the future rapidly. It's really good to hear, and I'm floored by how excellent our staff is, it's just, it's great, thank you, we appreciate it.
Okay, all right, so I just want to say thank you again to the council, who always, you are here as volunteers, as myself, we're volunteers, and you spent a lot of hours, and I was thinking about, Councilor Hamilton was here last night on his birthday, of course, back at it today for a town hall and then a work session, and I appreciate you, you know, your dedication to the city, and I thank you for all of the hard work.
With his parents last night, from Wisconsin.
Parents got to see him in action, too.
They sat through the whole meeting.
Yeah, so thank you for that, sometimes I feel like you guys don't get thanked enough. It's, we did have a town hall this evening, it, we had a couple people in attendance, and so I'm going to really ask, if anybody's watching tonight, to maybe go back and take a look at some of the previous council meetings that we've had, where we've gone in-depth about the serum rates, and why we're going to be asking the voters to take a look at a rate increase. There's a lot of information out there, if you want it, you can email any of us up here, you could email staff, you could look at past budget presentations, and I want to just make sure that we're here to answer those questions and concerns, so if you have them, we'll walk through that with anyone. And school is in session for K through 12, college, the students over at SWAC moved in today, it was 375, we have capacity for 400 students in the dorms, and there, 375 moved in, and so if you always wonder, you know, yep, there's a lot of big games coming up, and there's Deep Beavers and the Ducks that are happening this weekend, don't forget, we're also, you know, this community is a college town as well, so be nice to those kids out there when they're, you know, they're adding to the economy, they're buying pizza, and you can, you can easily spot them at Walmart, you know, like you'll see them over there right now, like picking out their little refrigerator and their sheets and stuff, and so introduce yourself and, and talk to them, because I always think it's neat. We have quite a few international students, too, again this year, so they're really building that program. And that's all I have for council comments, we have a couple items, number 11 for other business, so I believe item A is the letter of support and consideration for the Oregon Department of Transportation, and you have a copy of that letter, and I would just then look for a motion from the council to accept the letter as presented?
Authorize.
Or authorize me to send the letter.
Okay. So I move to authorize Mayor Engelke to send the letter as written that we had in the Oregon Department of Transportation supports community pass program.
Okay, heard a first from Councilor Jones.
Second.
Second from Councilor Schultz, any discussion? All in favor then for the council to authorize me sending the letter for the Oregon, to the Oregon Department of Transportation for community pass program grant support, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item of business, or Wolf, sorry, okay, so there's another other business, correct? And it didn't happen to have that motion in front of me, but I believe it would be a motion to sunset the special events committee. Mr. Wolf, was there anything else that you think I need to be adding to that?
I would just add, you know, my sample motion would be, I move to dissolve the special events committee created under Resolution 3338.
3338.
Yeah.
Got that, Schultz?
I move to dissolve the special events committee created under Resolution 3338.
First from Councilor Schultz, and then a second from Councilor Norrod, any discussion?
Real quick, I guess, we were, we made this happen, and we set out with the goal to have it go live in Jubilee, it happened successfully, we've got a new plan to carry this forward, and I know, Pat, you weren't part of it, but it's a good deal.
I agree.
In last night's discussion, so.
Oh, okay.
So, yep, Claire, yep.
He still gets to buy the cake.
Yeah, he gets to buy the cake next year, too.
He's smiling, so we'll take that as a yes.
I'll buy a good one next year.
All right, so we had a first, a second, and a nice, healthy discussion, all in favor then to dissolve the special events committee that was set under Resolution 3338, please say aye. Any... So that takes care of all of our other business, correct? Is there anything else, Mr. City Administrator? Okay, then I will adjourn this meeting, and we'll quickly move into the URA, so council meeting adjourned, and I'll open the North Bend Urban Renewal Agency meeting and call that to order. Would you like a roll call from the urban renewal commissioners?
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Here.
Present. Commissioner Norrod. Present. Commissioner Garbonin.
Here.
After that, we'll go ahead and see if there's any public comment, I don't believe there is any.
There is none.
Okay, we'll move to item three, which is our urban renewal agency consent calendar, is there a motion from the commissioners?
I move to adopt the urban renewal consent calendar, and I present.
Heard a first from Council Goll, a second from Councilor Hamilton, is there any discussion?
All in favor of accepting the urban renewal agency consent calendar as presented, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five is our executive director's report, the URA.
Yes, thank you, commissioners, a couple things, we are finalizing on the last procedural parts of the maximum indebtedness for the urban renewal agency, those always sound like, wow, maximum indebtedness, that is a word that allows us to continue to collect funds, and then use them to the adopted plans. When I say procedural, that means that we will be going and scheduling going before the school board, we will go before the port, we'll go before the city council, and then we'll circle back with resolutions for the urban renewal agency. Also, quite a bit of work going on at the buildings that the urban renewal agency owns at Washington and Sherman, they took the holiday to put the plaster on the outside, and so it is curing, we have found more blight and dilapidation and water damage than you can imagine, and so when folks say that, wow, we just allow free enterprise to come in and fix that building, they would not have done so at the expense just to fix it, not including the quarter million, well, I shouldn't really say folks' number, but the number that the business has actually invested locally. And so that project will be finishing up, and then we will move on to the Salon Billa portion of it. South Coast Hospital is finishing up towards their facade grant that is next year to City Hall, and that is progressing very nicely. And then the state has given us an amendment to the Bay Cleaners property, originally it was the Tortilla, and so we presented our case, showed them what was occurring, and so they've allowed us now to move forward, and we will issue a...